Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for August 6, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. at the Hollis Community Building. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have roll call from my left.
Mike Harnoa.
Roger Hicks.
Mary Hoffman.
Jack Regala.
Then I need a motion to suspend the Select Board Meeting and go into an executive session pursuant to MRSA 4056A to discuss a personnel matter.
Make a motion to go into executive session second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we need to go into executive sessions. So Ms. Beck...
And you're going to have to remind me what the name is because I've been working on it and just taking it one step at a time.
It's just a community resiliency grant.
Resiliency, yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, welcome.
Essentially, there were three projects that we could have pursued and came up with the conclusion to pursue heat pump installations for this building. It has a great heating system, but it lacks punch in the summertime with the heat, with air conditioning. Part two of the equation being that this is a great facility to use for a heating and cooling station, not a, not an overnight, but a station for those who may need to have a break in the winter or during the heat of the summer. We're waiting on quotes from two different companies with regard to providing the service for both this floor and the lower floor. And once those are done, we will submit them. The basic application, if I recall, has been pretty much completed. And we need to just to add the two quotes or the one quote of the selected provider, and we'll submit. I think we've got a good shot at it.
And we have most of our assignment done. We've got letters of support and we have, Chris Young has come up with what we...
So we'll be verifying all that information and setting up a plan of action to get it done by next June. The Conservation Commission had applied for a community resiliency grant, which they got awarded. It's for Southern Maine Planning to develop an open space plan for us. However, it's on hold because we're waiting for the money to come from the state. We've done all the paperwork, but we're still waiting for the money. And Southern Maine Planning is aware of that, but it's a two-year plan. And then Dick is gonna present another grant that we're applying for.
And you're gonna have to remind me what the name is, cause I've been working on it and just taking it one step at a time.
It's just a community resiliency.
Resiliency, yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Essentially, there were three projects that we could have pursued and came up with the conclusion to pursue heat pump installations for this building. It has a great heating system, but it lacks punch in the summertime with the heat, with air conditioning. Part two of the equation being that this is a great facility to use for a heating and cooling station. Not a, not an overnight, but a station for those who may need to have a break in the winter or during the heat of the summer. We're waiting on quotes from two different companies with regard to providing the service for both this floor and the lower floor. And once those are done, we will submit them. The basic application, if I recall, has been pretty much completed. And we need to just to add the two quotes or the one quote of the selected provider and we'll submit. I think we got a good shot at it.
And we have most of our assignment done. We've got letters of support and we have, Chris Young has come up with what we need to purchase as far as the two buildings to be able to, you know, do disaster relief and heating and cooling.
Correct.
But we're waiting for Southern Maine Planning to finish their sections too. And they're supposed to have them done by Friday, so.
So which building are we talking about?
The one we're in, community building.
We're talking here. Was there any thought about the large meeting room at any point?
In, in what?
I thought there was a big role in getting part of that grant, I mean with the TIF.
Yeah.
For that.
We included both buildings, yeah.
Yeah.
Big room. That's why it was designed. We had to figure out the space.
That has, that has the potential for a shelter, which would be an overnight with cots and so forth.
Right, okay.
This is, this is really two reasons. One is because it's not well-ventilated in the summer and could serve for non-overnight relief from either hot or cold in the, in the off-seasons. And then, and the fire chief has given us pricing for all of the related overnight and station, for both.
Okay, so it's gonna be combined.
Yeah, we're not forgetting the other one. We're just looking at double up and have the opportunity to serve two different ways.
Okay, good.
Cause this, a grant can be up to $75,000, so.
Okay.
We're sort of trying to spend the money.
Yep.
Perfect.
Roads update.
The last I talked to Robbie, the three roads we selected, he's doing ditching currently. I believe it's September that, that all state has put us on the, on the votes to start paving.
Yep, that's what he said to me earlier this evening.
Salmon Falls Library update. I'd wanna thank Joe and his wife for all the work that they've done. And I know that Joe said that they're gonna start trimming the bushes and stuff back next week. And then probably in August, they're gonna be doing the roofing. And then in October, I think he said, they'll be doing the siding, so it all should be done before wintertime.
Correct.
Did he ever get back to you about the propane tank? Did he reach out to Dead River?
I've not heard anything further.
Okay.
Cause there's an old propane tank that needs to be emptied and removed from the library. But Joe Ponzetti is also working on that. So Joe and Nancy, we really thank you for all the work that you did.
Yep.
Carryforwards for fiscal year 2024, '25. I think that Roger's gonna report on that, but he's been doing a busy job.
I was just verifying some more numbers with Diane. Also, I'd like town manager to do is, I believe the select board should meet with the fire chief, because I'm holding off because of an issue that he brought forward.
Yes.
I'd like to have him here at the next select board meeting to present that.
Yep.
Because that will affect the carryforwards.
Understood.
And if he can bring the report and any ideas on the remedies.
Yep, yep. He's prepared for that. He actually, he actually would like to meet with a couple of you to pre-stir that pot and make sure he's got all of, all of the items covered, both you and Jack and Roger.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Cause I think he just wanted to make sure there wasn't any thing that he forgot when he presents.
I just wanted all going through the town manager to us. That's, that's, that's why I.
Yep, yep.
Yep. Anything else under O Business that anybody can think of? A new business, we did get a cost estimate if we were to have a warrant in November. And Martha, thank you for all your work in presenting this to us. The estimate would be $5,000 and that would be in addition, cause there is gonna be two referendum questions from the state in November, so they're gonna have to have, you know, people here. But that was $5,000 in addition to the cost for having the main referendum election. So I know that the Comprehensive Planning Committee was hopeful to get it on the November warrant, but we're not even close to being ready and really need to figure out if, you know, how, how we have to proceed to get it on the June warrant. So I don't think that there's a reason to have a November ballot, but I'd like everybody's opinion. So Mike, what do you think?
I'm not sure.
Okay. And can you clarify that?
I'm not sure. The $5,000, it seems, seems like a lot.
Mm-hmm.
To spend on this particular, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that it's worth the, the money at this point.
Okay, already? For having a special warrant if we were to have one. I think the only.
But right now, we don't have anything.
The only two individual, the only two parties that have addressed it with Martha were the Comprehensive Planning Committee and we decided at our last meeting not to. And I think the planning board was inquiring, but they haven't presented anything to us in person.
Okay, because they're running close to their timeline to get their things, your public hearings and whatever they wanna put on, if they are considering it, needs to be done very quickly here in order to meet the timeline, correct?
Right, cause Martha said that all public hearings for all ordinance changes or amendments proposed by planning board or comprehensive plan must have been advertised, meetings held, and certifications given to select board. The select board need to allow time to write the warrant before signing it on September 3rd, 2025. And the comprehensive plan needs to give a 30-day notice before holding public hearings. And the planning board needs to give at least 14 notices, days' notice before having a public hearing and then a seven-day notice. So as far as I'm aware, nobody's had any notices go out for public hearings.
Right.
So I don't think anybody really has the timeframe.
Kind of a mood issue right now, because you're not gonna meet the timeframe to have it.
Right.
Exactly.
Add to that, if I may, add to that, those ballots have to be ordered in advance. There's, there's advanced voting prior to the actual election day. So they, they gotta be ordered, calculated, and then the additional tallying. I don't think it's reasonable.
Okay, so do I have a motion about not having a November warrant?
I'll make a motion. We don't have a November warrant, second.
Any other, any other discussion?
Just to clarify, it's not feasible from a timing standpoint. Everyone's pretty much 100% on that.
Yep.
Right.
Then it seems like there's really nothing more to talk, okay.
Okay. So how do you vote, Mike?
Aye.
Roger?
Yes.
Aye, aye, aye.
Jack, I vote aye. So we vote not to have a November warrant.
Right.
Thank you. And then we have next, an updated workflow for select board and town manager offices. So I think that we all have been trying very hard to refer everything, no, to refer people's questions to the town manager and I thank him for being so understanding with people. We've had a couple challenges. He actually had somebody meet him at the door the other day, to sort of, whatever. So I've really been impressed with how he handles situations. And I guess the trash recycling has been a real challenge, cause he's had up to 25 calls about the trash and that they didn't do this and they haven't done that and why is there two trucks and yada yas. But I think that's starting to settle down, but.
I think so, you're right.
Dick can probably address that a little better.
We have met with the, the current providers, excuse me, to talk about challenges. The challenges, as I see it, is again, two, two containers and how they have practiced in the past. And I realize there's an adjustment, but if one is for recyclable material and the other is for trash, they pick up one. I think that they even actually tip that off to the side, so they know they've got it.
Yes.
And then the other vehicle comes by and picks it up. Now, they've flirted with a two-chamber truck and may very well do that, which will actually simplify things a little bit. But at this point, I have a few ideas that I wanna refine before I bring them forward for you. I might dig into your carryforwards just a little bit more, but I think the outcome would be very well worth it. And I'll get more detail on that and provide it to you later. The other things are day-to-day and I think that Mary saves things, so that when I come through the door, I have more to deal with than I can think of about in one particular morning or another.
Well, people are still coming to me and I tell them that they have to go to Dick and then I just give them sort of a heads up that these are the questions.
That's okay. I love it.
So, and I'm trying not to be there as much, but I'm trying to clean up my stuff too. And get all the minutes for comprehensive done, so. Policy updates. We have two policies that we were gonna update tonight. One is for purchase order and disbursement of funds and one is just who can do purchase orders. And we went round and round. We talked to Ben this week, because I was unclear about what we had to sign and what Dick could sign. And we found out that Dick can sign purchase orders. But Roger was wondering if we could just put it off till next meeting, so that we could really review the policies in case anybody has any concerns or questions. So I think we've probably signed all the purchase orders for a while, so we probably could put it off till next week for everybody to look at them and maybe send them out to the staff that deals with purchase orders in the treasurer's office, cause I don't know if we've shared it with like them.
I don't know.
To make sure they don't have any questions, so.
Mike had a, looks like you got a question.
Well, I just wanna just make sure that, Roger, you're still feeling the same way? I mean, looking at it, reading it.
I just made a couple of, I just made a couple of notes on it. The only one that I have is competitive quotes. And if we're gonna move this up to $2,000, I see how you put it in more detail, that they have to give you a detailed justification on why we're spending the money.
Yeah, I, I wanna make sure that everybody understands. I, I don't do these things blindly, because this is a budget that you folks put together. I would remind you that in June of next year, I'll have a little bit more skin in the game, shall we say.
Yeah.
And so it'll be a little easier for me to make some of those decisions. Right now, I am looking for second opinions. I talked to Diane about almost everything that comes across the table and the folks who are coming to me asking for signatures, I do ask them. And the first question in each case is, did you, did you budget for this and is this, or is it expected? And Mary's around a lot, so we are able to, to converse and, and satisfy those things. So I hear what you're saying and they will become more detailed as I get further down the road and understand what your budget, budget looked like.
Because when I started working with the auditor, we were trying to decrease the number of carryforwards.
Yep.
Because it makes a cleaner audit for the town.
Yep.
And the only other one that I thought on you compared, there were times that we deal with a single source.
Sure.
And it's kind of a mood issue to go out and get a bunch of quotes if we have a single source.
Of course.
Those are the only two notes that I have.
So I wondered if with the competitive quotes, do we wanna have, I mean, our ordinance says that if it's over $10,000, you have to get three bids.
Yep.
So do we need to add that there?
Well, I'm just saying, if we're spending $2,000 of the taxpayers' money, we should have a few quotes that show that we're getting the best bang for our buck.
The 2,000 was a threshold for the individual directors to be able to, to answer the call, so to speak. And, and that was a number that frankly was prompted from the fire department side, cause 90% of the things that they touch are that much money or more. None of them have, no, nobody in the town has been shy about touching base with me. So even if they have the permission, they're still talking to me about it and, and more and more. But I agree with you. We'll get, we'll get the detail.
Yep.
Are you looking at number four to have a number in there, right? A dollar amount. Is that what you're saying?
No, he.
Would you talk with competitive quotes?
Right. It says the town manager or the select board.
I can see, I can see what he's saying with the POs.
Yeah.
But now we go to competitive quotes. When do you think you have to go competitive quotes? I can understand a PO, what he, what like Chris is trying to say. You're right. Anything you touch there, you know?
Is that much money?
But if you go out.
If it's, if it's, well.
Well, but you brought up an example tonight. You said, why did so-and-so mow over at the sports complex when we could've gotten it cheaper?
That's what I'm saying. Where's the number fall in play? I mean, you, you said, you know, a certain amount. And it doesn't take too much to exceed 5,000, 10,000 today.
Right.
So where do you, where's that threshold? You say this has, we gotta get three quotes. I guess that's all I'm saying. I don't know if I make sense or not, but that's what I'm trying to say. When do you?
And right now, under ordinance, and then you'd have to change the ordinance too, if we change the number, which wouldn't be until next June.
No, why not?
But in here, we could have a number.
Well, your ordinance trump your policy.
It's true.
So, currently it's at $10,000.
Okay, that's where you came up to 10.
And I think this is at the town manager's discretion too.
I will tell you that, I, I know it's hard to believe, but everybody who is asked, I say, is this what, is this common? A, B, have you got it within the budget dollars that you've already scheduled and, and are aware of? And C, I don't ask point blank, is there a less expensive way? It's kinda changed around to, is this customary and have you prepared for this? Have you done this in the past? Is it something that you've been, been dealing with in, in prior years? And I try to get a feel for what is going on. If it's out of the ordinary, I will tell you, I met with a vendor yesterday. We will deal with that, what that is in more detail later, but by no uncertain terms, I gotta talk to two or three others, because it's a big enough bite that I don't want to just trust the one quote that we got. So you're right. If, if I can be so bold, trust that I will be doing what, what you asked to be done. I don't disagree that there should be a threshold, whether it's 10,000, 5,000, or 15, pardon me, that's up to you. So if you want it hard, fast.
The ordinance, so that stands a place at 10. But it's like, it's just like when we were doing the sports complex, the track, that went out.
But is there, is there a threshold for?
Routine is, if you wanna set one, that's fine.
I don't know. So do you wanna table it or what do we wanna do?
No, I, I think airing and having a good discussion tonight, I feel comfortable with moving forward. I just wanted to be able to air my opinions on the policy.
Yep.
I'm glad you feel that way, cause I think this is a good move towards getting more efficient in what we're doing and, and putting our trust in our town manager, so I'm hoping that we can move this forward tonight.
So I, I just make a motion that we approve policy 21 and 45.
Second.
And the only, only change with 45 was it used to say that the planning board.
I don't remember.
Finance committee could. Finance committee could do purchase orders and we felt they should just come and talk to the town manager.
Correct.
Yes.
Because he knows how to write.
Right, yep. Yes, there we go.
Okay, thank you.
Please go down. Got a vote?
So, how do you vote? Mike?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Thank you, Bennett. Okay, now we have an appointment to the finance committee. We did have two individuals apply, but then one person withdrew their application. So the board has decided that we're going to appoint James Booton. That's probably mispronouncing his name, so I need a motion? No? Need a motion to appoint James Booton.
Second.
As a member of the finance committee. So to James Booton, oh, I need a motion. Do we get a second? How do we vote?
Yes.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Yes, yes.
To James Booton of Hollis and the County of York and State of Maine, we do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as a voting member of the finance committee. Within and for the municipality of Hollis, such appointment to be effective until June 30th. And so we'll all need to sign that too.
I would venture to say we have probably one of the strongest finance committees of any town around here. FYI, for those listening.
We just have a really, really good finance committee.
Yes, we do.
And then we have some purchase orders that we'll be signing tonight. And I'm going to have Roger go over them. He was talking to Rob about the salt and I don't know what the conclusion was.
All right.
So we got 4563 and it's Morton salt. Each year we go into the cog bid with the state and this year it's 82, 83 a ton. He wrote the PO for 1,200 tons. At times we don't go that high. We're mandated to buy 900 ton to meet the bid. But we also throw in that 300 extra ton in case you can't determine what it's going to do. So that one's 99,396. But we're a little over what we budgeted for. But at the same time, there's no budget. It's one of the only ones besides GA that we can overspend if we need to. So move to approve that one.
Second?
Oh, yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Yes, aye.
This will be one of the last times we're signing. We'll just have a review.
Yeah. The other part is the liquid, it's called black minus. We buy 4,500 gallons that we treat the salt with. That's 4,564. It's 8,325 dollars. We usually cover that, the TIF. Move that we approve that one.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then we have 4,545 for the rec department for coastal t-shirts, $900. Move to approve.
I second that. All those in favor, aye? Super.
Yeah, let's look at next time.
What's that?
There's all those.
What, did you have another one?
No, I left them over in the other building, but we'll address that with the carryforwards next meeting.
Okay.
Alrighty. Warrant last week, 27,502. Warrant this week is 86,392. Payroll last week, 42,597. Payroll this week, 42,487. And that's your warrant and payroll.
Cool. Thank you. Mike, would you like to do some correspondence and announcements?
Sure, it's my specialty. Some reminders to our residents about curbside trash and recycling pickup. Trash recycling pickup begins at 6:00 AM on your scheduled day. Household waste should be separated into two containers, one for trash and one for recycling. Trash and recycling containers should have lids to prevent wind and animals littering the area. There are two separate trucks for pickup, one for trash and then one for recycling. They are not driving together normally. We suggest that you keep your containers out until they have finished both pickups. If questions or issues, please contact the town office at 207-929-8552, extension 26. Keep going.
Dick, did you have anything you wanted to add?
At this point, no.
Okay.
The Maine Center for Disease Control has notified the town that a crow with West Nile virus has recently been identified in Hollis. This notice is posted on our website as well as additional information about the West Nile virus. You can visit www-main.gov and search the term West Nile virus. Please join us for our annual Hollis Community Day/Pirate Fest this Saturday, August 9th at the sports complex. We kick things off with our community parade at 10:00 AM, followed by games and activities, opening at 10:30 after the parade with some, with something for all ages. Explore over 40 vendors and informational booths throughout the day, featuring delicious food trucks, handmade crafts and local products, community info booths, a huge silent auction and raffle with the proceeds supporting the Hollis Rec Summer Scholarship Program. We're also going to have a dunk booth for Roger and Jack. So come dunk the Hollis Select Board. Little ad lib there. It's not true. Our main stage lineup includes all that.
Everybody was writing it down.
I just go, hold your breath.
Our main stage music, main stage lineup, well, it's kind of a music and performance. So all that dance is performing. I don't know the times offhand, but you can see it online on Facebook. I think it's around 11:30, I believe. The Saco River Jazz Band is going to be playing, really cool band. All volunteer. They do great old standards, big band sounds, cool stuff. Chris Akona, which focuses, which is a surf band, really great band. Also, one of our local residents and town, great guy. Paul Matore will be playing bass in that band. The Donna Anderson Karaoke Show, I don't know anything about that, but it sounds fun. Jack Fawcett in band, they are kind of a rock, bluesy rock band and they are out of Saco. You should definitely check them out. And I think everyone knows this band, Bad Habit. They play all over, all over the place. And they're going to be closing out the night right before the fireworks, which start at 9:00 PM. The night sky explodes with fireworks spectacular, made possible by our incredible sponsor, Poland Spring, Primo Brands. Full schedule is on our website and the Hollis Community Day Facebook page. We hope you can join us. A reminder to residents that you need to re, if you need to re-register your vehicle, trailer or boat, we highly encourage you to do so online. Links are available at our website or go to main.gov and search Renew My Registration. It is very, very simple. The Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry is taking comments until August 12th, 2025 regarding the Town of Standish's comprehensive plan. The link to review the comprehensive plan is on our website under announcements. We are still seeking the town's oldest resident to pass on the Boston Post cane, Boston Post cane. The oldest resident we know of is 98 years old and born in February 1927. If you know someone older, please notify us.
Thank you. And then I'm going to let Roger read this one because it looks like a challenge to me. It's about pesticides.
Free pesticide disposal for Maine residents in 2025. If you have unwanted, absolute, obsolete, old and unusable pesticides, sold by needs, may be cleaned out. Maine obsolete pesticide collection program. And you can, is this going to be on our website also? You can read and review that on our website also. And it's thinkfirstspraylast.org. So that one will be available on our site.
And you got to register for it, so.
Can I see that?
Sure. Yeah, I was like, whoa. Any other business? Mike, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Jack?
No, I'm fine. I'm good.
Roger?
Oh, have we heard anything lately on the bridge?
We haven't heard anything lately on the bridge. At all, no. And we haven't heard, the Bar Mels decommissioning committee is all ready to go. They're going to meet the end of August. But we still haven't heard whether the, their study plan isn't available yet, so. But the two, the two groups, five from Hollis and five for Buckston, are meeting the end of August with the coordinator, Bruce, so.
Okay. You know what? I actually do have some other business I forgot. I would like to, we, I'd like to propose, not make a motion right now. Not a propose.
Drag.
There is one thing. I think, I think we should start thinking about having maybe a dual meeting with other boards. Other committees, other boards. When I say dual meeting, having something in the future where the, the select board and the finance committee has a co-meeting, for lack of a better term, and the same thing with the planning board. And maybe we can do that in the next couple of months or something along those lines. Is anybody for that, against it, or seems like a?
Well, your finance committee will be coming into a budget cycle starting in December. So getting budgets ready to go. So I believe, yes, we should be meeting with finance to, I know you'll be.
And we actually had reached out to the planning board to see if we could meet on the 30th of July, which was an extra Wednesday, and they never got back to us. So, yeah, we are trying to have.
It is, it is difficult with schedules, but I think maybe if we do it far enough out, we could, we could get something on the books and get everyone there. And also being summer, it's hard with everybody.
Yeah.
So let's look in September, maybe.
Okay.
Worst-case scenario, October. But I'd like to, I'd like to get some good dialogue going with those two committees and slash boards.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Anything else? Because we still have upcoming town committee and board meetings.
May I have a, one, one second?
Yep.
Two things.
I keep forgetting that you're over there.
That's all right. I sit quietly. That's all right.
Too quiet.
On the 19th of this month, and we won't meet again for another meeting until the day after that. The two young ladies on the first floor are going to be busy. One is in training and the other one has some off-site business to attend to for the town. So from 2:00 to 4:00, we won't be able to register cars and take care of in-depth business. There will be somebody there, obviously, to greet folks if they don't get this message. So try to schedule around the 8, excuse me, around the 19th, between 2:00 and 4:00 if possible.
And what day of the week is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. So Tuesday from 2:00 to 4:00 PM on the 19th.
Correct.
We won't have anybody for the tax collector.
Correct.
So, just so people know, and we will get it on the website and wherever else we advertise.
Yep.
Thanks.
Second thing is, going back to the crow, we did have a request and we had given the okay to scope two areas of the town for mosquitoes. They want to trap them and test them for any kind of potential risk of the, you know, spreading of that West Nile. So we have not heard back whether there's been any findings or not. But that is typically the most frequent spreading device is through mosquito bites. I also learned that folks in our age generation will feel more flu-like if you did catch a piece of West Nile. It's not as traumatic as initially thought. And then the final thing, if I may, on Saturday, I have commitments unfortunately during the day, but I'll try to get here in the evening and catch the end of the show. So save me a sweet treat.
Fried dough. Do you like fried dough?
Yeah, thank you.
It'll be there.
Fried dough, everything's there, so. Upcoming town committee and board meetings. Planning board meeting on Wednesday, August 13th at 7:00. The comprehensive planning meeting is August 13th at 9:00 AM. Sports complex committee meeting on Thursday, August 14th at 7:00 PM. Select board meeting on Wednesday, August 20th at 7:00 PM. Conservation commission meeting on Thursday, August 21st at 5:30 PM. And Don, I always mispronounce his last name, Marion? Moran is going to be speaking about his, oh, now I can't think what it's called. About his forever farm. He's going to be doing a presentation on his forever farm and how he went about getting approval for a forever farm. And we've actually asked to have it taped so it can be available for people to review because it's quite a process and we're really very fortunate that he did that because it's a beautiful piece of property. And then the planning board meeting on Wednesday, August 27th at 7:00 PM. So now I'd like to welcome our public, so Ms. Martha.
I timed that pretty good. Martha Huff, Hollis Town Clerk. And I just want to say, I just came through the entryway. I can't 100% say, but there's a lovely quilt out there that maybe is for the raffle on Saturday.
Yep, I think so.
I'm like, wow, that looks pretty nice. Pretty tempting, so they have some good raffle items. I'm sorry, I got my phone on here, so I'll put it down so maybe it won't be speaking to you at the same time. Just wanted to speak briefly about the upcoming November 4th, 2025 election. I'm going to ask, you know, that election questions come to the town clerk's office. The absentee ballot request forms are available now. If you have completed an ongoing absentee ballot request, and Crystal has a lovely book set up, alphabetized. So if you've requested that your ballot come to you ongoing, we will get those out to you. If you're not certain, you can always give us a call. They, how you get an ongoing request is it's a separate request form and you needed to be over a certain age, I want to say 65, or you could self-declare that you had a disability and would be, and it's difficult for you to get to the polls. So we do have quite a few of those. If Crystal was here, she probably would be able to tell you the exact number, but I'll, I'll get it for next time. How's that? Because it's kind of cool. The absentee ballots will be available in early October. And I won't go into a lot of these. You can register to vote online or by mail until 21 days before the election. And I didn't figure out what that was, but it's October something. I'll get that done. And what was the other thing I was going to say? Oh, I checked out, you can, this is a state election, so you can call to order your absentee ballot or you can come in to fill out the form. And I believe the state will have their electronic website up. I just checked. It's not up yet. It says not, not available. So that may be just today. I'm not sure. But, and when you do that online one, you just have to check the right box because there's one for UOCAVA voters, which are overseas or uniformed voters. And then there's one that is for regular absentees. And then I think there's a third one. So you just have to click in the right box and you fill it out and those electronic requests come right to you, right to us and we'll get the ballots mailed out. So I just wanted to touch base on that because we have some people that race to be the first person to request a ballot so they can call tomorrow if they want. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Martha. Thank you, Martha, for preparing that, you know, amount of what it would cost us to have a special election. I really appreciate it.
Talking about that today, I didn't add in the cost of the absentee ballots either because as soon as you add another ballot to that envelope, it's another stamp. So I didn't even get that figured in. And we usually have at least a couple hundred absentee ballots, even on a, a smaller election. And then, of course, for the presidential, we had, I don't know.
A lot.
Over 1,000. I don't know, but maybe, yeah, quite a few.
Okay, the other thing is, is are we going to have to fill out the form again to change the venue?
Yes, that's been submitted. Crystal, the deputy clerk, did it last week. And they're okay because we said to them, I can't, we sent the, Bennett graciously sent me down a plan. Yeah, so what do you call that?
Floor plan.
Yeah, and I sent that in and I told them that we would get the specifics done as far as the width, the actual widths of the doorways. And I said to them, you know, it's what, a seven? it's what, a 7.5 million dollar project. I'm going to assume that it's handicap accessible. And I said, they paved the driveways. They look pretty flat to me. So we did submit that and they are, it hasn't been signed off from the state yet, but the girl that we spoke with, Grace at elections, said they could wait a few days for us, you know, till we get in there to do the actual measuring. She thought that would be okay. That didn't come from the Deputy Secretary of State, but I can't imagine she's going to give us a hard time.
She'd override her.
Yeah, she could. She could say no. And if she calls and said, I need it today, we'll get permission to go in. And, and we did a couple alternate, we gave them two choices of vote or flow because they always like to have opinion on that, meaning you come into the table, you go to the booth to vote and where the ballot machines are. And there's several options. And for me, I kind of need to see it. So Martha did a plan and submitted it, and Crystal did a plan and submitted it. So we'll see, so.
See which plan wins.
Yes. And I do want to say that Crystal Garnett is the deputy town clerk. And when you call, I mentioned this last time, it's okay to talk to her. She can do everything I can do. So when you order your ballot, I know I have my favorite people that always call, but it's okay to give the information to Crystal and you'll still get a ballot. You don't have to speak to me if I'm not there. And we do have some trainings coming up and I'll get those dates to you. We're going to try to not both be out of the office the same day, even though it's required that we take election training every two years. But where I know I'm bowing out, I think maybe we can get around that, I think. So we're hoping till she take one class and I'll be gone the other day for the other class. So that's what we're planning.
Thank you.
And I'll get those dates to you tomorrow so you know when they are.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Okay. So Becky, is anything? And then I think we forgot to do anything with our executive session. Do we have to make a motion on what we wanted to do?
We're
You just read it out before. You had, you read something before.
No, it, it's, you can't make motions and approves. You've got to come out of the executive session.
So we were
I would just, I'll just say that, yes, I know, but.
We need to make a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the arrangements
Compensation.
For the employee.
Yep. Second? All those in favor?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Yes.
Jack? And I, I say yes, so.
May official.
Thank you. My God. Here I am looking at a piece of paper saying, did we do anything?
I was just wondering. I thought you had something there before.
Yeah.
I took that.
Well, we did it when we were still in session.
Okay.
Any other business? Oh, come on, Martha. There's got to be one more thing. October, I think you're going to do dogs, right?
Yes, October, yes. Oh, Mary, you just bait me. October 15th, you can register your dog for 2026.
No one on Zoom? Nope, nothing Zoom?
Anything from any of our broadcasting crew?
Well, at this point, then I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
We don't even have to do that, but we do it just for drill.